I don't plan on talking tonight.
Oh, Ed, I don't believe that.
Really?
Captain's here.
Hi, I'm good.
He's got something to say tonight.
I know, I'm excited. I like it.
I'm calling everyone attention, okay. Calling to order the Capitola City Council regular meeting, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Reed, do we have a report on closed session, please?
Certainly, Mayor Bertrand. The city council met to discuss two pending litigation matters, and the city took no reportable action on either.
Thank you very much. I'd like to say that this meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications Capital Channel 8, yes, and UV, U-verse, Channel 99, and is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. And on Saturday, the following reprocess at 1:00 p.m. on Channel 71, and also on Comcast Channel 25. Our technician tonight is Kenston Rivera, and as a reminder, please close your cellphones, and if you want to come up, sign your name on the sheet if you'd like to be recorded. Are there any additional materials?
One set of additional materials for item 8D was distributed. It's an updated version of the bail schedule for consideration.
Thank you. Okay, any additions and deletions to the agenda?
Staff has no changes.
Okay, so this is time for public comments. Anyone that would like to speak, you have three minutes on an item that's not on the agenda. Hi, Tony.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Mayor Bertrand requested that I come in tonight and just talk a little bit about the chamber and what we do, and it's always a good refresher for the residents who are watching at night to see what the chamber does.
Can we give her more than three minutes, if you need? Up to four, or something like that, because you do have a lot of things to say. Thanks.
I can do it in just a couple of minutes.
Okay, thanks.
Anyway, we were at the Easter egg hunt last Saturday, and that's one of the things that the chamber does, and we had over a thousand kids, plus their parents, attend, and it's just kind of a free-for-all. And, you know, people come up and tell us, "Well, you should have rules," and all this stuff. No, no, it's a free event for the families, and we want them to have fun, no rules. So, it took us two hours to plant the eggs, but of course, they were gone in five minutes. But it is a popular event, but that's just a sample of what the chamber does for the community. We do the Halloween Children's Parade. We put on the Capitola Art and Wine Festival. We do Surfing Santa. We try and do a lot of fun things for the community. Of course, the Art and Wine Festival is the main event, and it's grown over the years. And this is our 37th year doing the Art and Wine Festival, and we have quality artists. We get about 40,000 people down there, but the village is the perfect place to have it. People come down and they shop, not only at the art booths, but in the shops down in the village. So, it's a big boost for the community. So, other than the special events that we do, we're here for the community. And people think, "Oh, you're just a place I can go get a brochure in." I said, "No." You know, we do a lot of referrals and networking with our community businesses, and we work hard at that. We promote our city through social media, paper ads, magazines, things like that. And I have one employee that just pretty much does that all day long. And we're here for the city if anything needs to be done. For instance, back in 2011, when we had the main pipe burst down here in the Pacific Cove Mobile Home Park, we were there working closely with the city employees in helping to get those people out of there, get them fed. The city put up lodging for them, and I worked with the employees to go out and see what the businesses needed, plus the residents. So, we started a grassroots effort, and we collected money from locals, and we were able to fund a number of the businesses in the village. We were even out there digging out mud from their stores, and they had to have carpets replaced, you know, cleaned out, their merchandise was gone. It was terrible, but that's one thing that, you know, we'll get in and work on with the city. So, we're prepared for things that come up, and we're happy to help the residents in the area. People that relocate to our area, we have relocation information, and we'll have them come in the office and sit down and go over everything with them. Same with visitors. They'll come by, or they'll call us, or even get on our website, which has been totally updated, to get information. And my staff and I, we've all been around Santa Cruz County. I'm a native. For so many years, we pretty much know everything, the lay of the land. And so, people will call us, and we always answer our phone. It doesn't automatically go to voicemail, and we give them that one-on-one service. And when they come in the office, we do that as well. So, we're here to be part of the community and work hard for our residents and for our businesses here in Capitola. Are there any questions?
No, but recounting what happened during the flood is truly an extraordinary effort, and I'm glad for your part in doing that. A lot of people were devastated, and the fact that the chamber was part of that is truly amazing.
Well, the whole community got together.
It was many people in the community, you're absolutely right.
And worked together.
Okay, thanks, Tony, for coming forward.
Thanks for coming, Tony.
Yeah, really. For the late arrivals, this is a time for public comment. If you'd like to come to the podium and say something on an item not on the agenda, please come forward. And if you want to write your name down, it'll be recorded.
Sure. My name is Alan Cable. I live in Topaz Street. I wanted to thank the council and the Works Department for approving and implementing the traffic calming measures in the jewel box. Certainly, in my opinion, it's made a great improvement in the level of traffic that goes through there in the evenings. It's made it a lot, a lot, much more pleasant to live there. The speed controls on Jade Street have made a huge improvement in Jade Street. It used to be a racetrack, and now it's really a much safer street. So, I wanted to thank again the council for that. I think it really worked out well. We do notice, of course, that when enforcement is in place, it's much better. There are a lot of people that still either are not aware of the signs or ignore the signs, which is to be expected, and I think we talked about when we discussed this. So, I would really encourage the Police Department to continue the process of enforcement, the brand of enforcement. But I think, certainly in my opinion, and I think in the opinion of my fellow residents of Topaz Street, it has made a great improvement, so I wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else from, oh, great.
Hello, my name's Dana Ingersoll. I live on the corner of 47th and Topaz. So, I'm also here to thank you for the traffic calming measures that have been in place. And the safety, especially on Topaz Street, is so much better. I was actually able to, like, slow down and talk to my neighbor at 5:00 without, and just like, my friend was bringing her son down the street and was like, "Yeah, it's okay to bring him down the street," you know, on his little bike, like a three-year-old. So, that's how all the other streets are in the jewel box. It's nice to finally be having that experience. I would say that it's been my observation, living on that corner, that the Topaz- I would say that it's been my observation, living on that corner, that the Topaz block has been much more effective than the 47th Street, in terms of who is, you know, how many people are respecting the signage or not. There's still a lot of traffic on 47th Street, so maybe that could be considered around enforcement, but we're definitely very grateful, and I also agree that the Jade Street, it's much safer for pedestrians to cross, people are slowing down, I'm going slower, I mean, it's just, it's much better. So, I know it's been a long, drawn-out process, you guys have been very patient. Thank you for your support.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Okay, bring it back to City Council for staff and City Council comments. Welcome back, Ed. Maybe you have something to tell us about Washington?
Yeah, I just want to make a note that I missed the meeting two weeks ago. I was actually back in Washington, D.C. I sit as Capitol's representative on the Metro Bus System Board, and we sent a coalition of people back to Washington to lobby for some revenue for new buses, and we've been doing this for the past three years, and I've been fortunate to go the last two, and we've been very successful with achieving grants. So, that was my reason for missing the meeting two weeks ago. I just want to comment on one other meeting. I also sit as a representative on the, it's now called the Santa Cruz-Santa Clara Round Table, which is the follow-up of the Select Committee, which basically deals with the jet noise we've all been living with for the past five years, and that meeting was Wednesday, and we're just trying to figure out how that committee is going to work into being a representative for, to prevent, to attempt to prevent any other types of FAA interaction by changing routes that will affect our communities. I do want to note that the big item we dealt with two years ago was the transition of planes from a route that was called BSR over Santa Cruz to the surfer route, which now flies over Capitola, and the vote of the Select Committee two years ago was to move that route back to the Santa Cruz route, and the wheels of the FAA turn slowly, but we did finally get that their group will be meeting, the entire FAA group will be meeting with the airlines and all the representatives, not the public, but the representative on June 24th and 26th, to make the final decision about what's going to happen with that route. So, we all anchorslay await to see if those planes leave Capitola, so that's my comments.
Well, while Ed was out lobbying, I was at the Easter egg hunt down in Capitola, on Capitola Beach, and I just wanted to really thank the chamber for putting just an incredible event together. My daughter's four years old, and she and I have attended it every single year there. She, Tony forgot to mention, there was 2,000 more eggs this year than last, to, so that every child that attended not, didn't just have to get the one or two eggs, they were walking around, walking away with big buckets full. And I also want to thank the Capitola Candy Company, who donated candy and stuffed animals and had special golden eggs for a number of the children that attended. So, it was a beautiful event and a beautiful day overall, so thank you to the chamber, it was a great event.
I have nothing to the recording.
Oh, okay. I think one thing that was forgotten, Tony left, I believe, Tony's not here. The Easter Bunny came. The Easter Bunny was there. The Easter Bunny always comes, and last time I did not see the Easter Bunny, but there was this huge line that stretched off into this distance of kids that wanted to be with the Easter Bunny. It was truly amazing. That Easter Bunny had a lot of stamina, let's put it that way. For those who know, at St. Joseph's, the Stars Dinner is going to happen at 5:30 tomorrow. I think that's something a lot of people in this area do know about. I was thinking about something, when my wife sends me down to the store to get something like ice cream, which she did last night, she always allows an extra 15 to 30 minutes, and that's one of the things that happens when a lot of people know who you are. So, I was walking down to the store again today, and someone went through the intersection, stopped, didn't back up, but yelled at me, "Hey, Mr. Mayor." So, I went over, and I did not know this person, but she informed me that she lives on Riverview, and she's a little upset about the parking. Well, the solution, according to her, and it's been mentioned many times here, is that if people would only clean out their garages, they could put their cars in the garage. So, with that, Steve, is there something coming up this weekend in terms of a citywide garage sale? Yes, I've been hearing rumors that Capitola, or somehow we're doing a citywide garage sale?
It doesn't work out.
Am I incorrect? I may be wrong, but...
No, there is a community-wide garage sale. People can sign up, and there'll be advertisement and maps showing all the houses that are participating in the garage sale. It's great time to clean out your garage.
Okay, and when is this going to happen?
Saturday, Saturday, April 27.
Okay.
You can sign up from our website.
Okay, Larry, it is coming up.
I apologize for the error, counsel.
That's okay.
Sorry, Steve. The question was about the community garage sale?
Yes.
Yes, it takes place on Saturday.
Okay.
All around town. We've taken signups for the last month. We'll be publishing a map and directory tomorrow, both online, as well as we'll have maps in front of City Hall. We've advertised in the local papers, and at this point, we have about 100 participants.
Great. So, there will be a lot more parking spots available in Capitola after this garage sale? Okay, so, I went on a great tour the other day, and maybe, hopefully, someone from the Police Department could talk about this, but I read a lot of articles when, you know, something happens that a kid has to report, they've witnessed a crime, or somehow they've been involved in one, and the interview could be very traumatic for this person. So, Capitola has a, and the chief, hopefully, we could do a report on this. We have an interview room that's available to law enforcement, the DA, et cetera, and it serves Santa Cruz County, and the basic idea of this is to provide a room for the kid that is very, like, being at home, you know, or in your playroom, you know, to try to reduce the trauma for the child, and then also, all the people from law enforcement, the attorneys, district attorney, maybe the police that are arresting or somehow involved in that case are there, but they're not visible to the child. So, I think this is a wonderful thing that is now here in Santa Cruz, and I commend the departments that have been involved in this. And I think that is it for me. Thank you very much. So, Jamie, do you have any comments from the staff?
Not this evening.
Not this evening. City Clerk?
No.
Okay, so let's move on to the consent calendar. So, all items on the consent calendar may pass in one vote, but at this point, I'd like to leave it open to those in the public, if there's any items on the consent calendar that you would like to pull or comment on, this is the time to do it. Seeing none, bring it back to City Council.
I'll move the consent calendar, or I'll second.
I'll go with the motion, I'll second.
Okay, see, he's back from, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? No. Okay. So, now we move on to general government, public hearings. Item 8A, consider options for banning flavored tobacco and vaping products. Do we have a staff report?
We do. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The added before you this evening, as mentioned by the mayor, is staff research related to flavored tobacco and associated concerns. In addition to options for banning flavored tobacco or vaping products, should that be the direction of council? You'll recall that during the March 28, council meeting, council directed staff to research options to ban flavored e-cigarettes or vaping products in our city, and explore additional tobacco laws beyond what we currently have in existence through our code, specifically, and potentially, a tobacco retail license to prevent youth exposure to tobacco. Part of our staff research identified that, per the Department of Tax and Fee Administration, Capitola currently has 16 tobacco retailers. Now, there's an error in the staff report on page run, page one, it states 19, that's a typo, it should be 16. Of those 16 tobacco retailers in the city, our research found that nine of them sell flavored tobacco only, in addition to tobacco, cigarettes, cigars, et cetera. Nine sell flavored tobacco only, those nine do not sell flavored vape products. Three sell flavored tobacco and flavored vape liquid, also known as pods. Two of the 16 sell flavored vape liquids only, and two of the 16 sell flavored tobacco, have no sales of flavored tobacco or flavored vape. In other words, they only sell the traditional tobacco product, cigarettes, for instance. Before you, on display is an overview of our city and the location of those 16 tobacco retailers. The highlighted green areas are the two schools, Opel Cliff and New Brighton Middle School, and then the yellow highlighted area is the library. None of the 16 are within close proximity to schools or libraries, as is mandated within our code, there's a distance of 1,000 feet or beyond, and you'll see that the majority are on the 41st Street corridor. I thought it was important to provide a specific definition of tobacco product, because it's very broad, and this definition comes from the California Health and Safety Code. And I'll read most of it. Tobacco products is a product containing made or derived from tobacco or nicotine that is intended for human consumption, whether smoked, heated, chewed, or any means of ingestion, including but not limited to cigarettes, cigars, little cigars, chewing tobacco pipe, tobacco, and snuff. A tobacco product is also an electronic device that delivers nicotine or other vaporized liquids to the person inhaling from the device, including but not limited to electronic cigarette, cigar, pipe, or hookah. And then importantly, it also includes any component, part, or accessory of a tobacco product, whether or not sold separately, and so that is the specific definition in California of a tobacco product. Our current law here in Cala, Capitola, under our municipal code, Chapter 8.38, and this has been, the most recent update was in 2015 to this code, this chapter, sellers must request ID. Business is not allowed, as I mentioned, to sell tobacco within 1,000 feet of a school or public library. Business shall visibly post Penal Code Section 308, that is a section that provides the punishment if someone was to purchase tobacco for someone under 28. Also post signage related to Business and Professions Code 22952, and they shall visibly post signs at each entrance stating a warning that if you are to purchase or facilitate the purchase of tobacco for underage persons, there would be some legal ramifications. Those are, that's the current restrictions within our code. Some of the youth safety concerns related to flavored tobacco, and this is from a 2016 Surgeon General report, we know that e-cigarettes entered the marketplace around '07, and since 2014 have been the most commonly used tobacco product amongst U.S. youth. A 2018 study conducted by the Surgeon General showed that more than 3.6 million U.S. youth currently use e-cigarettes. That is 1 in 5 high schoolers and 1 in 20 middle schoolers, according to that study. One-third of high school and middle school students who use e-cigarettes have used cannabis in their e-cigarettes, and we know that they are often marketed and sold in kid-friendly flavors such as bubble gum, cotton candy, chocolate, peanut butter. In 2009, the FDA banned flavored tobacco in cigarettes except menthol. Study also shows that 80% of age 12 through 17, and 75 of 18 through 25, who currently use tobacco, report their first tobacco product was flavored, and that's according to the FDA Population Assessment of Tobacco and Health. And we know that vape aerosol is not harmful at all. In the staff report, you'll find in the second paragraph on page 2, some of the potential negative exposure from vape aerosol.
I want to read that one more time, does say that vape aerosol is harmless or is not?
Is not harmless. Vape aerosol, according to the experts, the medical experts, exhaled into the air is believed to emit harmful substances, including heavy metals, volatile organic compounds, and ultrafine particles that can be inhaled into the lungs. The slide before you here is a 2016 local study that was conducted here in the county by the Healthy Stores for a Healthy Community. This is based upon store observations and public intercept surveys, in other words, surveys of people exiting tobacco retailers and what they found during those surveys. You'll see that 34% of the stores in 2013 sold e-cigarettes, and that increased to 57% in 2016. 63% of the stores that they surveyed sold flavored non-cigarette products, which often had kid-friendly flavors such as grape, watermelon, et cetera. A high percentage of the stores, 84%, sell menthol cigarettes. 60% of the stores near schools sell flavored non-cigarette tobacco products. And then lastly, 16% of the stores placed tobacco ads at kid-friendly locations, which is the eye level for children. That's based upon a 26 study done here in the county, 2016 study. Now, some of the arguments in opposition of flavored tobacco bans. Flavored tobacco users will simply order online and visit neighboring communities that haven't prohibited the sale of flavored tobacco, of course. Prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco will drastically reduce retail profit, retailer profits, and may put them out of business. This unfairly punishes local businesses, some of those local business owners are our community members. Adults like flavored tobacco, and flavor bans unfairly punish law-abiding adults. There are already laws in place that prevent youth from having access to tobacco products. The most recent was the 2016 change in California law that increased the minimum age to 21 from 18. The opinion that we don't need to ban more products, we need to do a better job enforcing current law. And then flavored e-cigarettes help people quit smoking traditional cigarettes. Restricting the sale of flavored tobacco will make it harder for those individuals to quit smoking. Now, here's what some of the other areas or jurisdictions in California are doing as of January 1st. It's actually more recent than that, I think it's closer to the beginning of, beginning of March. Some of these are best practice. I know it's important that we provide staff research and understand best practices in our area and throughout the state. 31 jurisdictions in the state have existing flavored tobacco restrictions. Of those, 14 have total bans on all flavored tobacco. Six allow flavored tobacco in tobacco-only stores. Those are the stores where no one under 20, you have to be 21 years old or older to enter those stores. Six jurisdictions allow for flavored tobacco in tobacco-only stores. Six of the jurisdictions have a total ban, with the exception of menthol. Four have bans that utilize school buffer zones, so no flavored tobacco within the zone that they have designated within that city, 1,000 feet for us, others have a more narrow zone. And then one of the 31 has a total ban on e-liquids only, also known as pods. So, some of the options to consider for council, based upon our research. Option number one would be to direct staff to proactively monitor all retail tobacco establishments and enforce violations of Title 8, Chapter 8, Chapter 838 of our municipal code, so that's status quo. Option two, direct staff to prepare a new ordinance banning the sale of all flavored tobacco and flavored tobacco products in the city of Capitola. Option three would be to direct staff to prepare a new ordinance banning flavored vaping products only. If council directs staff to proceed with either item or option number two or three above, staff recommends council also directs staff to implement a local tobacco retail license program, prohibiting a tobacco retailer from conducting business in the city without a valid TRL. This will require adopting a new and separate ordinance in itself. And in addition to the above options, three options mentioned, several changes should be made to Title 8, Chapter 838, to reflect updated definitions and updated law, most specifically, the change in the age from 18 to 21 that became effective June 9 of 2016, and then changing the ordinance language in our current codes from minor to the word youth to be consistent with the language that's contained in all of the state laws. That concludes my presentation. I'm more than happy to answer questions.
Any questions to the chief? No?
I have a question.
Okay.
Chief, I just wanted to maybe ask a little clarification about the enforcement mechanism. You referred to proposing, if there were one of the bans elected by the council tonight, that we would institute a tobacco retail licensing, and would, and that would be the enforcement mechanism? We would have to assure that they all apply, and then they would be... We would have to assure that they all apply, and then they would be inspected maybe annually to determine that they aren't carrying these banned products before their license is renewed?
That's correct. They would have to apply for a license on an annual basis, renew that license at January 1 of each year. That license that we would potentially issue to the retailer would contain conditions that we decide upon that would regulate that license. Any violation of those conditions based upon our inspection would potentially cause for that license to be either, either suspended or revoked, very similar to our entertainment permitting program here in the city.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want a clarification. Are there pods that have marijuana that are for sale right now in Capitola?
We did, um, there, there may be. We don't know for sure. We did an inspection, um, about a month ago with a number of our retail outlets and didn't find any violations. Now, that was not a complete audit or a covert inspection. Marijuana is being ingested by way of electronic cigarettes or vaping products. So I can't say for sure that it's happening, um, but I, I know of stories where it is clearly happening, and some of the data that we have compiled does indicate that many youth and adults use e-cigarettes to consume cannabis.
So I'm a little behind the time. Where are e-cigarettes available? I mean, how do you buy those or get them?
They're available through retailers.
Just through retailers? So the marijuana pods, normal retailers or do you, would you have to go to a marijuana vendor?
It would have to be a licensed cannabis retailer to sell a cannabis or cannabis liquid.
Okay. Got it. Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
This time, open to questions from the audience here, if you have any comments. Okay, bringing it back to city council for discussion. Who would like to jump in?
So I was the one who brought this forward, and I'm really excited that we're entertaining it tonight just because it was, I was asked not too long ago. So the fact that it's on the table makes me feel that it's, it's important to us, and I think it's our responsibility as council to hold ourselves accountable and responsible for what, what sort of things are sold to our community, especially our youth. As I was lucky enough to sit down with the San Luis County Health Department, we have some people, some specialists here tonight, thank you for coming, um, to really, to, to teach me about the impact of, of these pods that our students are having access to, our students are children. And so I was really surprised that I, of what I heard that, and you saw the numbers tonight. So, um, if I may, if there's, I would like to make a motion on the table already for option number two, which would be to direct staff to prepare a new ordinance banning the sale of all flavored tobacco and flavored tobacco products in the city of Capitola.
I'll second it.
Okay, um, so you're not concerned about flavored vaping?
That's included.
You're including that? Okay. Okay, and how about the tobacco retail license program?
So that if we would choose option two or three tonight, that would include the TRL, the tobacco retail license, so that would come into place so that our, our police department can enforce our new ordinance or policy, um, should we move forward with?
Okay, so that would be included. And then there was another recommendation to change, um, minor to youth, I think?
That's correct. Change the language in our current code, reflecting the current age restriction from 18 to 21, and then change from the word minor to youth.
Okay, you'd include that too?
Yes.
I'm okay with the second.
Okay. So any comments on the motion?
Well, if I may, thank you, Mayor. And I just, I want to say that I'm going to support the motion, um, even though, and I also say it feels a little bit awkward to have just approved an ordinance approving the sale of marijuana in our community. And now we're going to turn around and, and ban other legal products. So that seems a bit awkward to me, and I felt like I just need to acknowledge that. And maybe though to justify that, uh, if, in my own mind, if no one else, um, I am concerned about the availability of these products for, um, you know, young children and the impressions that they make, um, and we can't stop it all, but I think that this may help, um, uh, keep it from, um, you know, their use. Those statistics that the chief presented about the numbers of middle schoolers and high schoolers that are vaping and starting out on flavored products are, I think, very compelling. And even though we are approving the sale of marijuana in our community, retail sale, it is very highly regulated, uh, very highly controlled. And so I think that this is just, um, one means that we can use to continue to, I think, protect the youth, um, and guide them and toward good habits and good practices. So, um, so that's why, even though I, I do recognize that kind of irony this evening, um, I will support the motion. Thank you, Yvette.
Any other points?
Yeah. Um, number one, I want to thank Councilwoman Brooks for bringing this to us. I think it's a great thing for us to deal with. And number two, I, I share Councilwoman Story's concerns and the possible conflict. Um, I'm going to try to soothe you a little bit and work your way through that because I, I opposed cannabis when we even brought it here to, to bring it on the agenda to have it legalized in Capitola. I became comfortable with that because, you know, the research I did on, on how we got to that point was the voters overwhelmingly, adults who vote, uh, wanted legalization of marijuana. So that's not something I felt compelled to overturn when, when the numbers were so significant. The idea of the flavor pods, um, I see that more as this is something that is appealing to youth, and this is where I acknowledge Councilwoman Brooks and her tenacity for, for pursuing this, because this is where I think we can draw the line. We can acknowledge the fact that adults and voting, uh, people of voting age wanted cannabis, and so our, our task is how we deal with that and introduce into our city, whereas I don't see a benefit to the community with the flavor pods. I think it's destructive for youth, and so I'm able to separate that and draw that line and say that, uh, you know, we can draw the line and, and not allow the flavor pods and yet closely regulate the introduction of cannabis. So I too will be supporting this.
I feel it's rather insidious of the industry to introduce flavored components in their products. To me, it's a blatant attempt to get youth addicted, and so I definitely will support this.
With that, a call for the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? It passes. Thank you very much, Yvette. I appreciate it. So let's move on to 8B, Consider Resolution Allocating the 2019-2020 Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account Funds. Steve, I think you're coming forward with a report. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The agenda states we are looking at allocating the, uh, road maintenance rehabilitation account funding, otherwise known as SB1, tonight. Just, I'm going to give you a little background on our, our road funding allocations that we go through every year. Currently, the city has what I call two dedicated road funds. These are funds that need to go into transportation and road maintenance. First is the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account, also known as SB1, um, probably better known as SB1. That's a state-funded, um, allocation of funding through gas taxes and vehicle registration fees. Uh, the city receives approximately $170,000 annually from that fund. The other dedicated road fund is the local tax measure D, um, which is funded through sales tax, and we get approximately $300,000 annually for that. Both SB1 and Measure D must be used for transportation projects, as I stated. That includes road rehabilitation, repaving, uh, complete streets implementation, which is accessible designs for vehicles, pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit. That's really a big, um, component of both these tax measures is when we redo a street that we allocate space and we design for all modes of transportation. Projects can also be, this funding can also be used for vehicle admission reduction, congestion relief, and implementation of safe routes to school issue, um, projects. So they still have, um, both funding measures have certain requirements. For SB1, there is an annual adoption of a resolution, uh, by May 1st, listing projects receiving SB funding for the following year. So tonight, we're considering where we want to allocate our 2019-20, um, allocation. It's a little unfortunate because this May 1st comes before our budget, but, um, those are the state guidelines, and, uh, we try our best to meet that. And we also have to annually report in October on the actual expenditures made. For Measure D, there's, it's a little less stringent. We have until July to give them a five-year, um, projection of our expenditures. So it's something that we'll be considering when we review the budget and go through the capital improvement program, uh, later this month and into June. And there we have an annual audit of actual expenditures that's concluded. So we have two current road projects, um, that are, been on the books for different amount of time, but are essentially ready to go, and, um, we're here to talk about funding for those. First is the Park Avenue Sidewalk Project. This is a new sidewalk from McCormick Avenue to Cabrillo Street. It does include a new crosswalk at Park Avenue at Cabrillo. Its original estimate was $470,000. Unfortunately, as time has gone by, it's been on the books for about four or five years now. Current estimate is $985,000. Um, I would say the first estimate was significantly low. We've had to include a retaining wall that we hadn't anticipated in that. There's some safety features with the crosswalk, which we are including, and just the passage of time, projects, and especially in the last probably two years we saw with the library, construction costs have gone through the roof. So, um, the project plans and specifications are complete for that. We are ready to go to bid on that, and if this is approved tonight, we will be taking, bring that to bid at the next council meeting. The other, um, project that's been delayed and had some funding, it's actually had the allocation, the original allocation of SB1 money for this past year was a reconstruction of 42nd Diamond and Ruby Court. That's just the repaving projects and new compliant curb ramps. Uh, the original estimate was $770,000. Price has now increased to $1.3 million. Um, and we're about 90%. We could get ready to bid this project if, um, pretty quickly. Uh, we, this was originally part of the project that we paved Park Avenue Kennedy Drive in Monterey in 2016. Because the cost of that project of doing those streets ate up our entire budget, we, we deferred this project at that time. So this is a copy of the spreadsheet, um, that's in the staff, in the agenda tonight. We have enough money to build one of these projects. Um, and my recommendation, I think the Park Avenue Sidewalk Project is a higher priority. It provides a key pedestrian link between the Cliffwood Heights neighborhood and the village. It provides safe routes to school passage to New Brighton, or at least helps with that. Um, and it's been on the books longer. So my recommendation tonight is that we allocate the SB1 money from last year and, which is 1819, and the 1920 SB1 money to the Park Avenue Sidewalk Project, and we also move the Measure D money that was supposed to go in the paving project next year to the Park Avenue Sidewalk Project. That'll give us about $1.1 million for a $1 million, um, project at this point. Any money obviously left over would, would remain with the city and, um, could be allocated to other projects in the future. Regarding 42nd Avenue paving, I think as part of the budget, um, we're going to go through some reprioritization of our projects. We can see where this falls. I know Claire's Street is another area that we're all very interested in trying to approve, so we can, rather than, in, tonight, try and determine which allocations we're going to make in the future, um, we'll make that part as part of the, uh, budget session. So like I said, my, my recommendation is adopt a resolution allocating the 2019-20 and reallocation of the 2018-19 Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Count SB1 funds to the Park Avenue Sidewalk Project. That's my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of Steve? Sam?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Steve, how long has the 41st Avenue project been?
Forty-second.
Forty-second, yes.
Um, that was first part of the paving project, so it was probably initiated in 2015, um, and was supposed to be constructed in 2016.
Okay. And if we were to approve this allocation and reallocation, um, when would you be able to start our contract out, the Park Avenue Sidewalk Project? I, I guess I'm a little leery now of escalating costs and?
Right. So we are, like I mentioned in my report, uh, we are ready to go to bid on that. So if this is approved tonight, we will be coming back, I think, at the next meeting, certainly by the second meeting, maybe, but I'm, I'm looking for it to approve. You would approve the plans and authorize me to go out to bid. We then probably open bids in June, award a contract by the end of June, begin, you know, construction this summer.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
No questions?
In terms of reallocation, the SB1 that was previously allocated, is that a special reporting requirement, or is that fine?
So we have to report on our allocations. Last year, we told them we were holding it over, so reallocating it to another project is not a problem at this point. If we spent it already, it obviously would be, yeah.
So for under the 1.1 million, um, we could hold that? You said we could keep that in a special fund, or how, how's that work? So, you know, we're allocating it to a certain project?
Right.
And we got underbid, so what?
So any money left over at the end of the project, um, because it all goes into a project fund, will be, will, that'll be the general fund money?
Okay.
That we hold on to at the very end. That's the last we spend, and then we could reallocate that, um, to another project when we get the next project ready to go.
Okay, so we captured it. How is it that we missed the retaining wall issue?
The initial designs and preliminary layouts just didn't think it was required. When we finally got into the detailed design, they realized the cut for that retaining, for that area, it's, this is at 600 Park Avenue, was higher than they had anticipated, and it's just one of those things when you go from preliminary design to final design.
Okay. Thank you. So at this point, I'll open up to those in the audience, any questions? Seeing none, come back to, um, council here for comments and motion?
I'll move with the staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay.
I just, I just have a comment. I, I think, you know, early when this council came together in January, we had discussions, and there were some people here representing, uh, concerns about repaving streets, and one of the ones that came to a point, and we were doing, uh, budget review, was Claire's Avenue. And I, I just wanted, you know, it, I hope we all understand that, that doing these projects is becoming more and more significantly harder to accomplish. We went through four years of, of some massive paving, I consider, uh, with the, with the benefits of Measure O, which delivered us about $1 million a year. And I think, Steve, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it, you know, our, our payment index is maintained at ground zero with about $500,000 a year, and the fact that we basically put nothing into it other than what comes from Measure D and SB1 adds to 470,000. So we're at that status quo, and we, we barely do slurry sales, so we're not making any significant improvements, um, which, which doesn't bode well for what we're ever going to do for 42nd and for Claire's and, uh, other, you know, I think, Steve, you even mentioned to me that 41st Avenue is now in a little disrepair, Capitola, that intersection, and that's going to be a costly repair also. So it's something for us to think about as we're looking forward, you know, the, the money that we're going to have left over is going to be, you know, barely, barely, we're barely going to cover this project, and, um, just something for the council to think about as we're moving forward, that these, these street repairs are just significant. But on a positive note, uh, Sam, you were here when I think Sandy Erickson was here, and we were trying to get, she said I will never be here when sidewalks are on Park Avenue, so I'm, you know, I might send her a note in Texas and tell her we've got sidewalks on Park Avenue, so that's my comment.
Yeah, I, um, live in Cliffwood Heights, and I've known people who walk on, um, Park Avenue, and they walk their dogs there at night, including my wife at one point, and I tell them, "Don't do it. There's, there's no sidewalks," and coming down that road at night could have been an accident. So I'm glad to, um, see that we're going to get this project rolling, and I know a lot of the neighbors have been waiting for it. So with that, a call for a vote? We already have a motion, believe, right? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve. So item C, Consider Fee Schedule for Fiscal Year 2019-2020. So I think our city finance director has a report.
As Mayor mentioned, this next item before you is the fiscal year 2019-20 fee schedule. Just by way of background, the current fee schedule is adopted by council following a comprehensive study in November of 2015. And at that time, the consultant recommended that we review the fee schedule on an annual basis and implement a CPI increase. We've incorporated that review into part of the budget process, which is why we're here right now. Most fees since then, since the fee schedule was finished, have increased by the CPI each year. The exceptions would be fees that are set by the state, which are notary fees and something about circulating a petition. And then recreation fees, we don't always increase each year. This year, the CPI rate for the Bay Area is 3.87, which is what staff is recommending for the fee increase. And then just by way of history, those are the last three years since we've implemented the fee study on what the increases have been. This year, we also have a couple of new fees that we're proposing. The first is in the miscellaneous fees category, and that's an annual cannabis license fee that we're setting at $2,550. And I'm going to, I have some other slides that'll go through how we calculated these fees. Under recreation, we have a teen club fee as well as a K-36 program. These are both brand-new programs that our new recreation supervisor would like to implement. And the reason for the 60/70 is resident versus non-resident. And then in the building department, we are proposing three fees, which is a building reinspection fee, resubmission plan check fee, and a building permit extension fee. So on the cannabis license fee, we've set this up as cost recovery, and I met with our community development director and the police chief to figure out what would be the process for these licenses and how much time would be spent. So we came up with 1.5 hours of a senior planner, and before I go any further, just, these are fully loaded salary benefits. These aren't what people make per hour. Three and a half hours of police sergeant time and 10 and a half hours of police officer time. And then there's a $1.56 rounding to get to the even 2,550 on that one. On the teen club and the K-6 youth programs, recreation staff surveyed 24 similar programs that are offered throughout the county, looking at various components of those, cost, our scholarships offered, what types of things do the kids do when they're there, when is it offered, ages, staff to participant ratio, and the location. And then we tried to set a fee around the midpoint of the programs that are provided, which still provides a public service, but also provides adequate resources for an enrichment-focused program. And on the building fees, the building reinspection fee is set at $125 and consists of about 15 minutes of development service technician time and one hour of a building inspector I. The resubmission plan check fee is an hourly fee, and that's the building inspector II fully loaded hourly rate, so however much time that one takes. And then building permit extension fee is set at 176, and that's, we're estimating one hour of building official time and a half hour of development services technician time. So staff's recommendation is to conduct the public hearing that we're doing right now, adopt the resolution repealing Resolution 4132, which was the resolution that approved the current fee schedule, and then at the same time, that would adopt the new fee schedule. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions of Jim?
I would like, at some future date, to have our recreation director come up and describe what the teen club's going to be. And it's very exciting to hear that this is in the works. Thank you, Nikki. And that's one of my questions. Another question was coastal development permit appeal. I know that's at zero. Is there some reason, Coast Commission designated that at zero, or why would it be at zero? Ah, Hady, okay, thanks.
Thank you, Harris. So typically, a development permit is tied to either a design permit with a coastal development permit, or a conditional use permit with a coastal development permit. In those unique circumstances, when it's just a coastal development permit and it is appealed, then it would have no fee attached to it. So, and that's per the Coastal Commission.
Well, that's per Coastal Commission.
Yep.
Okay.
That's come from them, not from us.
From us, okay. Okay, so it's basically, I'm saying that, that's what I was wondering.
But for a home, for instance, if a house design was appealed on Depot Hill, and it required a coastal development permit, the appeal fee would be required because they're also appealing the design permit. If somebody appealed just the findings attached to the coastal development permit, so they were just appealing the coastal development permit, at that point, the Coastal Commission has said that we cannot require a fee.
Okay. While you're here, do we have special fees for ADUs?
We do. We have two different fees for ADUs, one for if it's reviewed administratively by staff, and that would just go through, staff would review it and send out a final local action notice on the ADU approval during building plan review. And that fee is, I think it's just about $600, if I'm correct. And then if any ADU that doesn't comply with all the standards of the code is required to get planning commission review, and that permit, when it goes to planning commission, is just a little over $1,700.
Okay.
Okay?
Are there any questions? No? Okay, thank you very much. So at this point, any of those in the audience would like to come forward and make a comment? Seeing none, back to City Council for action. Yvette?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and move to approve the fee schedule for 1920, just with a couple of additions and some requests. I believe that we would have to add the tobacco retail license fee to this before approval.
Correct.
Okay.
So, well, not before approval, I'm sorry. When we come back with the license fee, then we'll implement with the license, then we would set the fee at that time and just add it to the schedule at that time.
Okay, okay. And then I would like to just mimic what Mayor Bertrand was saying to Nikki. I would love to see Parks and Rec Department come back, not just about the after-school pilot program, but about all of the summer programs that are taking place. There's a lot your department's doing, and I would appreciate a presentation on all the good stuff that's taking place. And then lastly, I, so I sit on the Childcare Planning Council, which is apart from what I do here. And one of the biggest concerns or troubles that business owners who are interested in opening childcare centers face is, well, there's two of them. It's finding a location, and secondly, it's use permits. It's the permits that they have to obtain at the city level, in addition to state licensing and all these other fees. So when I was going through this, I noticed that we have some fees associated for use permits, not specifically stating for childcare centers. But if one wanted to open a childcare center, this is on AC1, they would have to pay these costs. So I'd like for staff to explore possibly a grant program that we could offer to business owners who are interested in opening childcare centers. Not necessarily to waive the cost, we can possibly look at using our dedicated children's fund to offset those costs for business owners. But I'd like to look into doing that. There's a huge need in our community. There's only two childcare centers currently in Capitola, and the waitlists are over two years long. So there's a definite need to entice more people to come and open businesses here in our community.
Those are good points. And having gone through childcare for many years and coming up with that difficulty, I totally agree with you. Yes. So any other comments here? Oh, okay.
Is that part of the motion? I mean, are we just given staff direction to look into those? Because can we do it that way, or does it need to be part of the motion?
I took it as staff direction.
I think we can leave the motion to just approve the fee schedule for 2019-20 and then give staff to write outside of the motion. I'd be more comfortable with that.
I took it as staff direction, but not part of the motion.
I have asked for future discussion of.
Yeah, that's what I saw or heard.
Which is not a.
It doesn't need to be a motion to do that.
No, it's not part of the motion.
The motion that you made was to approve the fee schedule, which I seconded. But in addition to that, you're asking to look for possible grants and whatever else was asked for. I think that's outside of the motion.
Right.
That's my understanding.
And also asking for a report later from Nikki.
And the report.
Yeah, right, okay.
Not part of the motion.
No, not part of the motion. Those are just requests. Sam?
Well, I just wanted to get clarification from the mover that that's acceptable to her.
From what I understand, when we request things from staff, I have to get a general consensus. And so I waited to offer these requests at this time, so you can see how it was related to the fees. But the motion on the table is to simply pass Item 8D tonight, but I would hope that I can gain the consensus from the rest of our group tonight to move forward with my request to have Parks and Rec present and for staff to explore a grant program to offset costs for childcare centers.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify, Mr. City Manager, you can add to this. Any council member can ask for staff to look into anything that doesn't need a consensus, so you're free to do that.
Then I have a good list. Hold on, no.
Boy, now the floodgates are open.
Quantify that if you like.
Well, let me start.
Yeah, really?
I'm just trying to keep us on track with Item D.
So we do have a motion and a second on the floor. I will just put a little info out there about how this process works. So right now in our municipal code, the way it's written is that council members can request an item in a future agenda. Any council member can request an item in a future agenda at an open meeting. I think the intent of the council behind that was, as Councilwoman Brooks suggested, to be able to kind of get a, you know, read of the room to make sure that the item had a little bit of traction. But yes, technically, any council member can request an item at a meeting. That's the process to do so. So it doesn't need to be part of a motion.
Okay. So I perceive that we've asked to have a presentation from Recreation at a future meeting, and we've asked for staff to get back to us on possible grant opportunities or what we can do to support or encourage or entice centers to.
It's already on the to-do list.
Okay.
Yeah, I, to me, it's not a technicality. I think anyone on this board has an idea and then brings it forth, and then we debate it. And so asking for general consensus before we've had an option to hear all the ins and outs of that issue and how staff reports based on their analysis to us, then I want that debate. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those, no one against. Okay, so let's move on to bail schedule.
And that one's me.
Oh, great, okay, good. I'm sorry, I did not know it was you. Oh, yes, from the clerk, okay, I should read these things.
It's all right, I think it's on the next page.
It was there, yes.
And.
Thank you.
I believe Jamie is handling.
Frantically.
Be slow. I'll stall by explaining, this is part two of the items that we're asking you to approve tonight that are charges that the public would pay. The first was the fee schedule, and those are for services rendered by and determined by the amount of time it takes. The second here, the bail schedule, this is fines and penalties. So this is a separate item from a fee and is handled as a separate resolution. Some of our code sections are general in the sense that they are misdemeanors and infractions, and there is a general fee set for those. And for others, we wish to establish a specific fee. So that's what we're doing tonight. We have identified 12 areas where we recently passed ordinances similar to what we're talking about with the tobacco. Once we have put something forth and you have determined to codify it, we then say, okay, if there's a penalty involved, this is how much the penalty should cost. So that's the process we're doing tonight. And we have 12. Many of them are related to the bicycle work that we did recently. We have two items that we realized never had fees attached, so those were omissions from previous updates, so there are two items for that. And then there's one where the language was revised, so we're just making the bail schedule match the way the item is described currently. And this is the schedule for kind of the overarching. So if there is not a specific fee, this is what rules for misdemeanors and infractions. And this is a sample from the new schedule of the various types of fees that we're looking at implementing. As you can see, for cannabis processing and cultivation, the police department recommended a high penalty bail. For others, the PTD, personal transportation devices, and for the RACs and such, it would be a much lower level. And it is the police department that recommends these. They look at other fees and try to find something that is comparable. So you have the full bail schedule in front of you. There are also some language cleanup items, just typos, other things that we've discovered over time. So the recommendation is to approve the resolution repealing the last bail schedule and adopting this current bail schedule. Are there any questions?
Yes, any questions?
I have none.
So, excuse me, you do have to, oh, I'm sorry.
I do, yeah.
I looked, now you see. Okay, I'm sorry.
Linda, just one question, thank you for that report. On the revised bail schedule that we got, there was an item referencing failure by mobile home park owners to submit resident list, which was deleted on the revised schedule.
Because it no longer exists in the municipal code, so it does not need to be.
Yeah, that was pertinent to when we had mobile home rent control?
Yes.
And so it's okay, thank you.
I have a question. So many of us get complaints about garbage cans in public view on non-collection days, leaving them out. So how would that be facilitated? How would someone make a complaint and how would this proceed? It's only $50, but I get these complaints all the time, that the garbage cans are left out in public view. So how would this work?
They would need, would the chief, would you?
I just don't know how it works.
Our garbage star will take that call.
Mr. Mayor, council members, so we do receive complaints. They notify, and then we follow up with letters or communications to the owners that they explain what the ordinance is and what the penalties are if they don't cooperate. And then we follow up to see if they've cooperated. But it is still, it's a complaint-based, we don't go around looking for the trash cans out, but we have, I would say in the last two years, we've probably received about a half a dozen.
Okay. Would a neighbor or whoever's complaining, let's say someone walking down the sidewalk, fearful they might bump into something and fall, would they have to give their name?
I don't think so. I don't believe they do, because we just, we know, because it's to a residence, so we notify the residents that it's out, there's no name attached to the complaint, I don't believe. I'd have to go look to see what we've done in the past.
Okay. I just want some clarification, so when people ask me. Thank you. So at this point, any one in the audience would like to make a comment? Seeing none, back to City Council for a motion? Comments and motions?
Approve staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Nope, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so it passes. So with that, we go on to Item E, second meeting.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members?
Yes.
We're here for the second reading of the ordinance to remove optional CalPERS membership from future councils. The first reading was passed at the 3/28/19 council meeting. Just a reminder, for those who don't choose PERS, there's an alternative called PARs, which is a social security replacement. This ordinance would only affect future council members, or future councils, excuse me. And so I hope I clarified, the additional cost for a CalPERS retirement annually is about $325 more than if a council member participated in PARs. Last time, that was a little unclear. It is a requirement of PERS to have this in general government, so. It is a requirement of PERS to have this in general government, so we're performing this reading. So at this point, I'm here to answer any questions from the council members.
Any questions of Larry? Okay, Ed?
I just had a question of the city manager, and I asked him to clarify. It was my impression that the second readings were normally just on the consent agenda, and so I was curious why this came back. So I just figured since he shared it with me, he could share it with the rest of the council, why we're having a second reading at an open forum.
Well, yes, that is a, that's a requirement of CalPERS. Neither one, either the first or the second reading can be on the consent agenda.
I have a vacation. Thank you. Okay, all those, is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, all those in the public would like to make a comment, please step forward. Seeing none, back to city council for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been.
Yeah, if I just may, I didn't support this the first time around, so to be consistent, I'm going to not support it the second time around.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Myself.
Yourself, okay.
Okay, the ordinance passes a second reading with the mayor, Mayor Bertrand, council member Brooks, and council member Bottorf in favor, and council member Story opposed.
Okay, thank you. With that, I call for adjournment. Thank you very much for all those who attended Capitol City Council meeting on April 25.